This is David Summers with City Planning. And we're here to talk about North Figaroa Street, proposal for bike lanes. We were requested by the Rose Second Neighborhood Council to come and make this presentation, have a focus meeting. And so we'll have, I'll let Nate go through the presentation, and then afterwards, I guess we'll open up the comments. Go ahead. Nate, go ahead.
We have extra chairs over here.
Extra member chairs. Actually, I need a chair.
So, good evening. My name's Nate Behrendt. I'm a bicycle coordinator for the City of L.A. I work for the Department of Transportation. I'm going to kind of go through a presentation about the project. Those of you who have been to our previous meetings, especially the hearing that we held at the River Center some weeks ago will be a little bit familiar with it, but I'll zero in on North Fig tonight especially, from San Fernando Road to York Boulevard. It's kind of the project that we've been asked to talk about tonight. David and Tim are here to kind of help us answer specific follow-up questions from the Rose Second Neighborhood Council. As questions come up from the public during comments, we're happy to answer the questions, but we're going to let the Rose Second Neighborhood Council Board kind of decide which questions you want us to answer, because that could take some time sometimes. But we're happy to answer questions back to the presentation. I'll try to get through the presentation pretty quickly, just so that we have more time for comments and follow-up questions. But essentially, what I'm going to talk about is I'm going to try to put these bike lanes in context. Why are we proposing these bike lanes now? We'll go into some of the details, some of the project details, and what would it entail to put a bike lane on North Fig? What type of bike lane would it be? We'll talk a little bit about the benefits as well, and then also talk a little bit about the costs, so kind of what we're weighing versus what we're getting. There are some very good reasons for going through this process for this project in particular. Some other projects we haven't done yet because of some other reasons, but we'll go through that. All right, so why these bike lanes? So, North Figaroa was first identified as a major corridor for us to look at in the 2010 Bike Plan. So, the 2010 Bike Plan was adopted March 3rd, 2011. Our most recent Bike Plan is a lot more ambitious than our previous Bike Plans. Previous, the first one, 1977, kind of first came up with the idea of a backbone network of arterial bike lanes, but we didn't really implement too many of those bike lane projects. We kind of set out a strategy, we want to have bike lanes across the city for regional travel, but we didn't go very far with that. We did get some very good recreational bike paths out of that. That's where we first kind of got a vision for the LA River Path, so that's kind of what some of those early plans have done. The 1996 Plan, again, was another plan that we just didn't really implement too much of. So, it became very important to our bicycle activists, as well as our city council, that the most recent Bike Plan be something that we could implement. So, it has a couple strategies. So, it's, like I said, it's more ambitious, so we more than doubled the number of bikeway miles that we wanted. Previous Plans only had about 800. This one sets forth that we want to do about 1,600 across the city. It sets up three different networks of types of bikeways that we want. So, we want separated bike paths along our rivers, that's really important. We want lanes on kind of a five-mile grid across the city that connect major commercial districts, that help you do that regional commutes across the city, that also connect you to major destinations on major streets. And then we also have a neighborhood network, where we do want to do kind of traffic calming improvements on quieter neighborhood streets on a one-mile grid to help you get from your local residence, residents, to those major destinations on the major streets. So, those are kind of the three grids that we talked about. Previous Plans, I talked about that. This kind of gives you a little visualization of where the 2010 Bike Plan is compared to the previous ones. Another important way I talked about this, it was really important to our city council that this most recent Plan could be something that could be implemented. So, to that, there's two main ways that was set up to be made possible. We have an implementation team, so there's a quarterly group of people. Everybody's invited to come to these. We've had more and more Neighborhood Council representatives coming to those meetings, but we talk about how we're doing implementing the Plan. We prioritize which streets to look at first. And we also have an implementation strategy. That strategy kind of takes the whole 1,600-mile vision that we have and prioritizes facilities that will connect gaps in our existing network. So, for all these many years, we've been doing bike lanes where they kind of fit, but we haven't put good networks in place. So, a bike lane just kind of sits on its own in one spot, and in another part of the city, there's another bike lane that just kind of sits on its own. So, we prioritize 200 miles that connect those things to each other. And that's kind of, that's one of the reasons that North Fig especially was kind of selected as something that connects existing facilities to each other. There's a lot of benefit to connecting our bikeway facilities. The other thing that it does, the strategy so far seems to be working. You know, we've done a lot of bike lane miles. This is our bike lane mileage growth. Before the 2010 Bike Plan, it was kind of incremental, two or three miles a year where we can find the space. Since adoption, we've done a lot more bike lane miles. This bar actually could be updated and go much higher. We've done 75 miles of new bike lanes this year. We've been doing those bike lanes where there's room for them on the streets. As we do traffic analysis, there are guidelines in the city about, you know, the impact of removing one travel and what that impact might be, so there are some pre-established guidelines for that. So, if we run the analysis and the traffic impact isn't too severe, then we will kind of reallocate space on streets. York Boulevard, which we have heard, some folks have been a little bit upset about York Boulevard, but that is one that where the, when we did the analysis, the impacts didn't break that threshold for us. And so, that was one where we felt like you get a little bit, a little bit, the traffic conditions a little bit worse, especially at the peak hours of the day, but the safety benefits are really worth it. So, we kind of moved ahead with that at the direction of the mayor and our city council offices. We've been really kind of talking about the safety benefits that these projects provide. Yes, they have a little bit of congestion sometimes, a little bit, your travel times get extended a little bit, and we think the benefits are worth it. Some of these projects that we're proposing, that connect these gaps, so essentially, let me back up a little bit. So, we talked about prioritizing gaps in our network, right? So, these, the thinner red lines are existing facilities right now. Despite even all the extra miles that we've been doing, there are still some really key gaps. And so, those are the projects that we've been talking about across the city. These pink areas, so Colorado and North Fig would establish kind of a network of bike lanes in northeast L.A. We were looking at four facilities on the west side to give a single bike lane across the west side. The central area, we were talking about a number of lanes to kind of connect all the central bike lanes to each other, and then also some facilities in the valley. All right, and that's where these, that's where these projects came from. All right, so we'll dive a little bit more down into kind of northeast L.A. and North Fig. Colorado, we've talked about, there's North Fig. We're looking at North Fig kind of in a couple sections, so we're kind of thinking about them a little bit separately, and that's because the CD-14 and CD-14, CD-1 kind of asked us to do that. But we do see, this is kind of the picture that we're proposing, being able to connect the whole northeast L.A. with bike lanes. And then the facility we're going to talk about today specifically is North Fig from York down to San Fernando. And so, this North Figaroa connects a lot of things that we already have going for us. So, we have the LA River Path down to the south. That Riverside Bridge is being widened so that the bike, so that you can get more car flow on it, but also so that the river path can be extended across the bridge. So, the river path's going to come all the way across the Riverside Drive Bridge and connect up to North Figaroa and San Fernando Road. There'll be a roundabout there. They've already started construction on that. Then the river path will wrap around and connect up to Avenue 19, which will help people get into downtown. So, once the Spring Street Bridge is widened and has bike lanes on it, that'll be kind of a good bikeway into downtown. And then if you travel up North Fig, you have great connections to the Cypress Avenue bike lanes via Cypress Avenue and Avenue 28, where it's a two-way couplet. You have good connections to some of our routes that are already existing off of Griffin. You're not far from the Royal Secular Neighborhood Bike Path that's just outside here. You also connect up to the York Boulevard lanes, and then the proposed Colorado lanes as well. So, you're just connecting, stitching together a lot of different facilities. There's just a lot of value for that. You make a lot more trips possible by bike by connecting those up. Here's kind of the configuration that we're proposing. This kind of generally gives you the proposal for the whole stretch of, most of the stretch of North Fig, from York down to Colorado, where we have two lanes.
San Fernando.
San Fernando. So, right now, where we have two lanes in each direction, and then parking on both sides, we're proposing to remove the one southbound lane. So, the peak hour flow in the PM is generally northward, so the PM peak won't be affected too much. Most of your traffic flow in the afternoon is going north, and so you'll still have two vehicle lanes for that. Where you're going to get a little bit of extra travel time is in the mornings, when the people are heading to work. We think folks can shift over to North Fig, but for the purposes of our traffic analysis, we assume that everybody is just going to stay there. So, we basically do traffic counts at a number of intersections up and down North Figaroa. We kind of give it a grade on how traffic performs at that rush hour, and then we take one of those travel lanes out in the software package that we have, and then we run the same count number that we have through it and see what the additional delay would be. So, you're talking about minutes of delay. I'll go into another graph in just a second. It gives us a little more context and kind of explains it a little bit. But essentially, you're going to get travel time delay in the morning on the way to work if everybody kept using this corridor the same. A lot of times, other projects throughout the nation, folks have seen that delay not really materialize, because folks do learn to use different corridors, to use the freeway. This might encourage some folks to start using the gold line. And then we do know that people do use bike lanes once we put them in. So, we think there will be some modal shift, but for the purposes of our traffic analysis and our study guidelines, we've been very conservative with the expectation for that, the same traffic flow as is right now. This kind of gives you a graph of how we do this traffic analysis over on the right. We're in a kind of a new phase right now. We have a new law called AB 2245 that says, while bike lanes and bike paths and bike routes have always been exempt from CEQA, the traffic impacts themselves have not. So, previously, previous to this new law, you would have had to do an EIR to look at these projects, and that's what we started doing. We started doing all the analysis that would have used for an EIR. The new law basically exempts us from CEQA, but it says that we have to do all the same stuff that we would have been doing anyway. So, you have to do the traffic study, which we were already doing, and you also have to do a safety study. And for this type of project, we're really talking about a safety benefit, because bike lanes have a really good established safety benefit for bicycle pedestrian collision, turning those collisions down. And so, the new law says that you need to go through a couple, you need to do these studies, and then you also have to have a hearing. So, we had a series of hearings throughout the city, and then you kind of, at the request of council, we've been doing additional outreach on top of those hearings that we did. I think we've been probably 10 or 15 meetings since then across the city. We've been doing a lot of additional outreach in the northeast L.A. area. We have had the most support in this area, but we also have had politicians who've been really concerned out here that we keep doing additional outreach, that we really make sure that the neighborhoods know what's going on and what really we're considering as a city with these two projects. This is a visualization of traffic over through the whole day. So, if you imagine, over there on the left is midnight, right, on that side of the graph, and over here is midnight, so it's a 24 hours. We call it the peak hour traffic, because right around, you know, 7:30 and 9:30, the traffic's really bad in the morning, and then the evening, 4:00 to 6:00, traffic's even worse usually across the city. So, that peak in the evening is usually wider, so that means that there's more traffic in the evening over a wider amount of time, and then it's also a little bit more severe. So, your travel times in the afternoon times are often longer than your travel times in the morning along the same corridor. And when we assign kind of a level of service grade in the city, A, B, C, D, F, it has to do with the height of that peak, the additional level of delay that you have during those peak hour traffic times. Other cities judge LOS based on the traffic through the whole day, they just kind of average it. City of L.A., for the longest time, we've been concerned about auto flow, how well we move automobile traffic, especially at the peak hour. So, our existing travel guidelines, we are very conservative. We look just at the peak hour when traffic is worst. That's the most important part of our analysis. And so, when you're looking at these graphs here, these delays, you have to imagine them on those peaks. So, this right here is graphing the average amount of delay during your peak hour travel in the morning. So, the existing traffic right now is the blue bar. So, you can kind of see the blue bar, and this is in seconds of delay per interception. So, Colorado was an intersection that we have traffic counts for. We also have traffic counts for York, Pasadena, Avenue 26, and San Fernando.
If I may interject, we've been, we started our design for the project to lay it out to see exactly what the, what the project will look like. And our current design keeps two lanes each direction on Avenue 26, so that red bar on Avenue 26 will disappear. We are revising our analysis to reflect that, just to clarify.
And that's again, that's kind of why I have David and kind of Tim here to help you with the presentation. So, my job as a bicycle coordinator is to look at the big picture. David's kind of an environmental review person, expert for planning department. He's also our bicycle planner. So, when we have questions about, you know, the process, the legality stuff, the CEQA stuff, AB 2245, you know, all the, all that kind of stuff, David's kind of our expert on that. I think of our bikeways engineers, Tim is our lead on this project, as kind of our street width experts, and also kind of the design expert, so he really has a good understanding of exactly, you know, how this product's being kind of designed. That's why they're here. And then, like you were saying, Avenue 26, that was the worst intersection. We've tweaked the design to be able to keep the two, keep two lanes there, so that will help folks get over the freeway in the morning. That will, that, that red peak will be a little bit lower, which is good to hear. And so, that, the red bars on top are the additional seconds of delay expected for each of these major intersections. They give you kind of a snapshot of what the additional delay would be if you were traveling the whole corridor, and we assigned that a number in our, our traffic study that we've released. So, when you're looking at, if you're looking at that traffic study yourself and you're reading these numbers, this is kind of a visualization of that, of those numbers in that study. Here's the PM peak. You can see here that the additional delay is really not much, and that's because we're keeping the two northbound travel lanes for the PM. And the reason we chose the PM peak to keep the two northbounds, because ostensibly, you could have done it vice versa, right? And I'm always having to ask Tim to remind me which one it is, but it's, the PM peak, the north floors are usually worse in the city. That's the case with this project as well. The North Figaroa just sees more automobile traffic in the evenings. People are trip chaining in the afternoons, and so... So, that's why we decided we could keep, keep the two northbound lanes. Before I go on to the benefits, I want to go right back to the...
Talking about the speakers.
I want to go right back to this picture of it. The bike lanes that we're proposing will be buffered bike lanes, so they're going to have your standard kind of five-foot width, but next to the five-foot width, there's going to be this buffered area, and that's cars and buses that are not supposed to drive in this area, unless there's an emergency, then bikes should pull over, you know, automobile traffic should pull over to the right. But these, these spaces are kind of reserved for the bike's comfortability. So, this is a facility that'll, that'll feel like the facilities downtown feel like, like Spring Street feels like, like Main Street, if you bring your bike on Main Street downtown. They're very wide, they feel very comfortable as a bicyclist. We've seen more women bicyclists on Spring Street, and women are a good kind of indicator species of how, how well the comfort of the bike lane feels. They're not a different species, I understand, but... Bicycle planners, bicycle coordinators across the U.S. city would like to see more women bicycling to the shows at these facilities. And so, the bike lanes on North Figaroa will be that. They'll be these really comfortable lanes. These are also lanes that in the future, we can convert to separated cycle tracks, once we find funding and once we find, figure out the design issues. So, we have a project called My Figaroa in downtown on South Figaroa that will be the first cycle track in the city. We're figuring out how ourselves, how to design that under California rules. Once we figure that out, and then once I've kind of made a pitch for additional funding, buffered lanes are a great place to put the parking outside of the bike lane and have the bike lane next to the curb eventually. You have to find funding, because the signalization at the intersections is a little bit more complicated, so you need separate bike signals for that phasing, but this is the type of facility that we could upgrade to that at a later point. All right, so we talked a little bit about the travel delays that we're expecting. Those delays are like, most likely to be in the AM peak for this project. Talking additional seconds delay at each of these intersections, it ends up being some minutes when you add them all together. And now, we're going to talk a little bit, I'll go really quickly through some of the benefits, but before I do that, there's a study done recently that kind of summarized a number of studies that have been done across England, Britain, and also the U.S., that a lot of these types of projects, the ones that I've circled here, that are predicting travel delays, oftentimes, they don't actually lead to travel delays, because the congestion actually helps change people's behavior. It helps people, encourage people to take transit, it helps encourage people to get on the freeway sooner than they would have. My girlfriend and I just commute from Pasadena downtown, and we always used to skip over to Figaroa very easily. This type of project will deter us, will deter someone from doing that kind of thing, and then a lot of people will start bicycling. We've seen the rate of bicycling go up exponentially the last few years. But we can't promise that that'll happen with this project, so we're just saying conservatively, we're expecting some additional delay. There's a number of benefits that we think this type of project provides. Travel mode benefits, so people do shift modes. The cities in the U.S. that have the highest bicycling modes are the ones that have the most complete networks. Northeast L.A. will have a very complete network once these projects are in place. This is kind of another visualization of that. We also just know that bicycling is really on the rise in L.A. It was on the rise even before we started doing anything for bicyclists. And you can really see that in some of the numbers. The commute mode has been up, it's kind of doubled from 2001 to 2009. That was really before we started doing all the lanes. You can see that increase when you're out there. Commute mode's not really a good picture of the number of people bicycling, because a lot of people that won't commute to work will commute local trip, will use their bike for local trips. SCAG estimates the number of bike and walking trips to be 21% of all trips, so there's a number of local trips that we make that more and more people are using their bike, more and more people are using transit, walking for those trips. It meets a rising demand that was already there. More and more youth are abandoning cars and doing that. There's also, of all the trips that we do, most trips are less than three mi, a good portion of trips are less than three miles. Less than three miles is a great trip length to do on your bike, and we make it possible for more people to make these types of trips, these types of facilities. And we've just, we've just seen that, you know, where bicycling was already rising before we're not doing anything, where we have put in lanes, we've also seen increases. The Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition has done a number of counts now. They've done two counts all across the nation, where you do facilities, you do see increases. We also know that these kind of buffered facilities, so this is Spring Street, it's green as well. Figaroa won't necessarily be green, but it will look like this in some places where we don't have parking. Imagine parking to the right of this for now, to kind of get a visualization of North Fig. You do have people who wouldn't have rode their bikes down North Spring riding down it now that wouldn't have done it before. Improved safety, so there are a number of studies to show that bicyclists and pedestrians are more likely to be killed when the collisions happen, so bicyclists and pedestrians are just in a higher rate of collisions than are motorists generally. And by doing, by doing bike lanes, you kind of help, you help slow a corridor down a little bit, so even in off-peak periods on that one lane, where the one lane's actually enough to handle the traffic, you do kind of calm speeds a little bit, because you don't have people kind of whip around each other as much. So, a lot of streets in L.A. where they're really wide in the off-peak, when there's not traffic, folks are kind of really passing really kind of too much. And so, when you can, whatever you can bring speeds down to a more normalized level, you decrease the severity of injuries. So, biking projects have not only decreased the number of collisions, but because speeds are lower on a corridor, they also decrease the severity of injuries. So, this kind of graph just shows that at 50 miles per hour, when you get hit by, as a bicycle or pedestrian, you're more likely, you're much more likely to die than if you get hit at 20 miles per hour. So, it's actually, by lowering speeds in half, you actually decrease the rate of injury and death by more than half.
When you say bicycle pedestrian crashes, are you saying bicycles hitting pedestrians?
No, I'm talking about bikes and pedestrians getting hit by motorists generally. I don't have, I haven't seen a whole lot of, there are some bike-ped collisions. The law in the city is that you're allowed to ride your bike on sidewalks, but you have to be wary, so if a bicyclist kind of hits a pedestrian or injures a pedestrian, it is the bicyclist's fault, and I would say in most cases. And so, if you're a pedestrian and you've been hit by a bicyclist, by all means, get a witness, charge them. I encourage you to do that. Bicyclists need to be very careful of pedestrians when they're on sidewalks.
One other question, how about a bicycle hitting a vehicle? What's the graphics on that?
I'll get that. There are a number of, the public health folks are really encouraging bicycling. We really have a crisis in our city in terms of obesity. We need folks to exercise more. Bicycling's a good way to get a little bit more exercise, especially when so many of the trips that we make are three miles or less. If you can do one or two of those trips a week on a facility that makes you feel comfortable, that does help us be healthier. There have been some study, there's a growing body of research that shows that bike lanes have an economic benefit. Here locally, a student from UCLA did a study on York, and before we put the lanes in on York, it's kind of when he was doing this study. And York was interesting, because half of the corridor, the western half of the corridor saw, had a road diet, I think it was back around 2006. The bike lanes came in a couple years after that. The road diet was originally done just for that safety benefit. Road diets, when you go from a four to a three, as York did, has a huge safety benefit, because you provide a center-left turn lane that wasn't there before, that cuts down.
I was parking for business, I'm sorry, it was. I was parking for business.
There may have been multiple benefits for doing it, but the safety reasons for having that center-left turn lane are really huge. Cut down the number of head-on collisions, which is a huge safety benefit. The bike lanes were added later. That provides... There'll be plenty of time for comment shortly, a moment through with the presentation, and I, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer questions. The student who did this at UCLA saw that the businesses, you had a compare, you were able to compare the one side to the other side that didn't have the road diet or bike lanes. He didn't see a harm to it. He did also surveys, a number of, he did a survey of customers and business owners. Business owners often don't see how their customers got there, so they often assume that customers got there by, by car. On York, more people got to businesses by walking and biking than businesses actually realized. And there are more and more studies across the nation that showing, that are showing a good economic benefit. You can provide, additional bike parking is very affordable as compared to adding a car space. Folks want to drive less, so there, there's a number of studies now that can show an economic benefit. That's about all I have. I am happy to take questions from the board. I have Tim and David here to answer questions that I did not be able to answer.
I have a quick question about the gold line crossing near Avenue 61.
I'm sorry, before you, before you ask a question, to be recommended, we do have comment cards, so let the chair recognize you before you ask questions, please.
There's the chair.
Mark, thank you.
We would like to entertain question and answers just with you guys first, and then we can take public comment after that, if that's okay? If you have a very specific question that's related to your presentation, otherwise, I told your comments for the comment period, if you turn the speaker card.
I have a very specific question about their presentation.
Please, go ahead. Please go ahead.
What I would like to know is you addressed the fact of the road diet. Now, according to the LA Department of Transportation, the road diet on Figueroa is 30,000 vehicles a day. And according to guidelines, you're not supposed to put in bicycle lanes on a road that has a road diet of anything longer than 19,000 cars. So how do you address that simple fact that according to the own rules of the Los Angeles County Transportation, this is almost double, almost double? And you didn't even mention that in your presentation.
So the, 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 those numbers are our guideline? And this, in most instances, when you do a road diet?
That's not a guideline, sir.
Can I?
That's a rule, sir. You're circumcising a rule, a rule from two parts.
Let me finish, please.
I apologize, I will shut it.
30,000? When you're trying to do a road diet, the standard road diet is when you have four lanes in each direction, and you take out one lane in each direction, and you put in a center-left turn lane. That's your standard road diet. Those projects, you want kind of a 20,000 to 25,000 range for your, for your daily ADT. And this...
Do you want me to go back to the presentation at all? Do I think we're back in this problem?
I don't, I don't think so. No. But in this instance, we're actually preserving the two lanes in the southbound direction for that, for that, in the northbound direction for the PM peak. Those guidelines also kind of help us interpret the, our LOS guidelines for traffic. And so if we don't, if, if we're following the letter of the law, we do need to do what we've been doing. That's why, that's why we're having these types of meetings. We do think that there will be some additional delay in the, in that, on the travel time of this quarter. That's why we're having the hearings. It's kind of a cost benefit.
Just to clarify, first of all, that's not a city adopted threshold. I'm not sure where you're reading from, maybe metropolitan.
I actually do my research, sir.
No, I'm just asking, I'm not sure where you pulled it from.
Remember, you saw the fire department and the lies you guys talked about, the fire department? You're gonna go there, you're gonna call me a liar again? You're calling me a liar, sir.
No, I didn't do that.
No, we didn't do that.
What's your? I'm just curious, I'm just curious what your sources, because as a city, we don't have a guideline that says...
It's from a transportation engineer who would not like to be named, but this might be because of the city. He's being potted by the council members who want to ram this through for the $50,000 hanging contract per mile, that this is really all possible. That's my answer to your question, sir.
We have, we have some leeway. This, this does, this is a new touch project, that's why they go through the hearings. But we do think it's an appropriate project to consider for...
So you follow the guidelines in these super?
Yes.
Yeah, same here. I'll be the liar. You're gonna follow the guidelines. Look, now, it's joking.
I've been living on the York Boulevard for four years, a retired law enforcement. It's too bad until last week, I tried, for the council, there was a police officer there, and I said, "Senior lead officer, would you mind speaking up and tell us what happens on that middle lane on York Boulevard when we have a truck that's unloading the beer for the York Bar or for the upholstery shop that's blocking that? And an emergency, if you have an ambulance? A black and white going code three? A fire truck going code three? They want to go over the hill on Avenue 51 to get over to Colorado, to the Eagle Rock area. They are now going on Meridian, Stratford, and Rangeview. They're coming up Avenue 50 and cutting over because the traffic at those key hours, from anywhere from 3:30 until about 7 o'clock at night, is backed up from Harmondale all the way over to Avenue 55. And the emergency vehicles cannot respond and come and battle...
Why do we, can we get this on?
I wanted to explain that. He said that the middle lane was a, was a positive element of his design. It's backwards.
Well, listen to this. What about through our process? Would you shout out comments now?
She called out.
I think the goal is to answer questions.
On the 14th of this month, the hook and ladder came down and tried to make the right-hand turn on Avenue 57. The pumper and the hook and ladder had to swing all the way over on the left-hand lane, the parking lane, to get around the bus. The car making was straight ahead, and the car making a left-hand turn, and the car in the opposite lane, and they couldn't get through. So maybe you should be more concerned about public safety than you are about putting bike lanes in. There are plenty of streets that have very low traffic, that bike lanes can go.
This is a specific question period. This is not a period to make comments.
This will be over.
If you have specific questions that are related to the presentation, please raise your hand. If you really want to put in the speaker card when you plan to make a speech or make a public comment, please turn your desk for that. Let's not, use up the question and answer time with speeches, please.
Okay, very simple question. You brought up the concept of putting the bike lane next to the curb and having the parking set out. How do you handle ADA access for drivers?
That's one of the design issues. We're kind of working here with My Figueroa, and we do think we have some solutions in place. We're talking about putting some brakes in it, but that's not really, that doesn't really pertain to this project at all. But we have, we do think we can figure those issues out.
We're working with our disability department, and we've been working closely with them.
All right, two-part question. First of all, these are contraflow lanes, basically, they do them in other parts of the country. And, you know, we're two-way, use less space, basically. You know what I'm talking about, contraflow. Is that kind of phrase?
The words, where it's northbound...
Yeah, right, 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 right next to it.
You're talking about two-way, the side of the street, is that...
I'm talking about one by lane, one by lane, we're going both directions.
The nature of North Figueroa has been that, you know, we, we don't want to remove more automobile space than we need to. We only really need the one lane to get the little bit of extra space that we need. But taking the one lane to give us the little bit of extra space we need also gives us that extra buffer as well. So the contraflow lanes are something we haven't really done much in the city. We wouldn't consider them if they were a great solution, but we don't, I, I don't see the applicability here.
When they use less space.
They don't use less space, they, you still need the minimum space for a bike lane, it's five foot. You need that five foot in whatever direction you go. But to get the five foot for North Figueroa, you need ten foot, five on each side. Even a, a contraflow, even contraflow, you need five from one direction, five from the other. You can't just have five that's two-way, because then all bicycles kind of hitting each other.
Well, no, there'd be less, one less buffer.
But the space that we need for North Fig requires that we take something away. It's gotta be parking, or it's gotta be a travel lane. We just, for this proposal, we've removed the one travel lane. You can't, you can't take away half a travel lane and have it still useful to automobiles. So we've taken the minimum amount that we need. That minimum amount still gives us the room to have the buffer.
In some other cases, it may be applicable to nonautomobiles.
The other question is, what if, what if you do it and it's a total?
We've got a whole lot.
What about, I said a two-part question. What if, okay, what if you put it in and it's a complete disaster and it's absolutely gridlocked, and what's the, what's the...
So any bike lane in the city can come out the same way that it went in via public care. So that's always an option for any facility in the city.
Real quick, there's already established bike routes that parallel these streets you're talking about. Why do we have to put the lanes on the boulevards when you have neighborhoods that can handle it just to be a safety...
We've gotten this question to probably every meeting. We have kind of two networks in the city. We have the neighborhood network, which is these types of facilities. So that, those are really good facilities to help you get your residents to the major commercial corridor. But if you're going to bike to a destination on North Figueroa, North Figueroa is the street that you need to bike on. And so our backbone arterial network is on a five-mile grid, kind of prioritizes those types of, there's no other way to get to a destination, to bike to the destination on Figueroa, except to be on Figueroa. That's why it's, that's why we're talking about it. The neighborhood networks are, the neighborhood alternative routes are always an option. But they do not serve, they cannot serve the same purpose and utility that a, that the bike lane on the major commercial corridor would.
Yeah, I have a, kind of a two-part question. All these proposals that have been done, being pretty much forced back from the mayor and city council. Is it a done deal? And if it's a done deal, why do we wait until that time to come and try and...
What's kind of... Nothing is a done deal. We, as DOT, are the implementing agents, so we don't make the decisions to whether we do Gold or Cross or not. We report to council and mayor. So elected officials are here to listen to you, and as part of these, these points of these meetings is to give input, and ultimately, a decision can be made. So it's not a done deal. Nothing is a done deal.